Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the special meeting with the joint study session with the Equity Cultural and Social Justice and the Covington City Council. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings are being held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we'll call this study session to order, and what we'll do is we'll have everybody introduce themselves. We'll go around. I'm gonna start online first, since they usually do that last. So if you'd like to introduce yourself. Oh, okay. There we go.
My name is Freddie. I'm new to my memory. Equity, social, justice, community, and I love work that we are doing.
Thank you for being here tonight. Go ahead.
I don't, is my mic on?
Yep.
Yes, it is. Hi, I'm Daphne. Oh, sorry.
Oh.
Sorry.
Ramel is on.
Oh, Ramel's on. I didn't even see. I just see a blur up there. Sorry. Ramel.
Hey there, I'm Ramel Marquez. I apologize if I sound a bit off. I'm not, not exactly feeling yeah, feeling a bit under the weather right now, but I'm well enough to do, just do this virtually, so.
Thanks, Ramel, for being here. All right. Is that everybody too? Okay.
Okay. No, no worries. I'm Daphne Hernandez. I'm the associate planner for the city. I'm also the staff leader for the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission.
Thank you.
Joe Smolow with the City Council.
Debbie Hertzler.
David Scalabrine, current Chair for the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission.
Jeff Wagner, your Mayor of Covington.
Sean Smith, I'm on the council.
Christina Saltes, City Council.
Chuckie Jardine, the Vice Chair of currently.
Beth Porter, City Council.
Jennifer Harchehalsen, City Council.
Regan Bulley, City Manager.
Krista Bates, City Clerk Executive Assistant.
Hey, thank you all for being here tonight. We have on our agenda tonight several items for discussion, and I'm gonna turn it over to David.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I want to thank Mayor and as well as the City Council for having us here tonight, as well as for your continued support this past year of the ECSJ Commission as we continue to grow and, and to continue to find our way and what we can do to help the community of Covington. So thank you for that. Also want to give a huge shout out and thanks to Daphne and Susanna for all that they do in helping to guide the Commission and support us. We can be quite a handful at times, and they do a fantastic job in helping us out. So I want to thank them as well. So, as you will see from the agenda, as well as from your packet, what we wanted to do is, we had pretty much in January, February, after I took over the Chair position in January, we had let the council know that we were kind of changing the focus of the Commission to be more towards the true advisory role and as part of what we would be doing. And so with that, we have been doing some changes to our work plan as well as our entire strategy. So we wanted to just kind of go through our 2023, 2024 update to the Commission work plan and talk about what we've been doing, what is in progress, and then what we're looking at towards the future. And so I will hand off to some of the other Commission members on certain items that they have been also driving as part of our work plan. So with that, if you've got the work, the work plan in front of you, we'll just start and we'll go through these, and we won't take, we won't do a huge deep dive, trust me. And we'll, we'll go goal by goal, and then also open it up for any questions as we go along, if you'd like. So with the first goal, serve as a liaison by working with community development and City Council to update Covington's 2015, 2035 comprehensive plan in alignment with the incorporation of historically underrepresented voices in Covington. So things that we've been doing have been engaged and provide input in the public engagement planning project. So we have been working with the planning, we did work with the Planning Commission in giving some input on the new, this is at the tagline for that's going to be used. So we were really excited to work with them on that. Continue to provide input for the housing element, capital facilities element, and transportation element, as well as provide input for equity approach and public use. So we are continuing, this is something that we had not really factored into what we would be doing in the past. So this is, this is kind of exciting for us to be including this now, because this is kind of new this year to us. So this is kind of exciting for us to be part of that process in helping to apply an equity lens to all the various elements that, that are in play when it comes to approaching anything and everything to do with the public. So we're happy with that. Any questions on that?
Sean. I'm intrigued by this, and it's interesting, I think it's probably a great role for the Equity and Social Justice Commission. How will that feedback be provided? Again, what I'm saying is, will these elements come to the Commission and you will comment on them, or will you attend the Planning Commission meetings? I'm just curious what the actual process is for getting your feedback on this.
It's going to be a combination of.
Okay.
So as new elements that need to be reviewed come up, so as an example, the, the equity metrics, which is now being called the Equity Approach, we were the first ones to take a look at that, work with the, the folks from Burke in regards to some of the, the wording within it, because it was, it came across as, if this is something, as we, we approached it is with them, is that if it was something that was going to be going out to the public, it needs to be less, in, in less technical jargon. And so that's what we kind of drove, along with applying an equity lens into everything. So a lot of people didn't, don't really think about, well, what does equity have to do with transportation? Well, it has a lot to do with transportation when you figure you've got to take into consideration those who are, you know, as far as handicap, accessible, things like that, things about that with our parks. So there's a lot of things that people just don't realize need an equity lens to it. And so we were able to do that from there, then went to the Planning Commission. But we know that there's going to be other elements. There's going to be the housing and everything else. So as it's brought to us from, with, from Daphne and Susanna, we will do our input, but then we will also have and have discussed having some joint meetings with other commissions, such as the Planning Commission, yes.
Perfect.
Events. All right. Goal number two, update the ECSJ webpage periodically to promote and celebrate different cultures and heritages. So as you all are now familiar with from my monthly reports to the council, we have definitely strayed into something very exciting, which is the update to our website, making it more interactive with the community and having the celebrations calendar, as we call it, which is been getting some great feedback, and we're really happy with that. We just had the social media posting go live today for this month, being French-American Heritage Month, so please go on and, and enjoy. But Chuck has been putting in a lot of hours in helping to drive the build of that calendar as far as the various heritages and all that. So I'm gonna let Chuck chime in a bit.
We've all contributed to it, and, and the focus was not to be doing Hallmark holidays, but real celebrations of things. We'd like to have you contribute. Have you talk about some, some, one of the celebrations that's important to you and your family. We want to see the community, we want to reach out to them and have them give it to, give us feedback as well, to have them included. But it would go a long way to have your names on the calendars program. So, you know, it's a way to get everybody involved. And, you know, we want to recognize everybody, but we don't want to exclude at the same time. So it's been an exciting, an exciting time to work on that. And if it's something that the city really, you know, finds that it does do something for them, there are some resources we can reach out to to make it a lot easier. But we'll put that into a budget request later on.
We also have recognized as, as Chuck has continued every month in bringing to the meetings updates for what's, you know, what celebrations are each month. We have recognized the fact that there are some months that have multiple heritage celebrations. So we will, you know, alter from year to year. I think like October has four.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to.
Found some more.
Yeah, so we gotta care. But we also then do have months that don't have any heritage celebrations. So like next month, we are gonna be looking at the fact that it is National Black Business Month, National Kids Eat Right Month, and National Breastfeeding Month, all of which actually have an equity viewpoint to them, because hunger is an equity issue. The right for mothers to nurse and have access coming from a, coming from a world where, of events where that wasn't normal at large conferences, but is now a normal thing to have stations or rooms for nursing mothers is very important. And so there are a lot, lots, a lot of things that may not be heritage celebration, but they do have something to do with equity. So we'll be deciding, you know, month to month, when we have those, what we'll be focusing on. Continue creating social media campaign events. We're really, we're really starting to see, even though we were a little hesitant at first when it came to social media and not really knowing how well it would go over. We also know that there are some, some limitations to social media and in regards to, there's a lot of our elderly population that aren't as active on social media, so that may not be convenient for them as far as a communications tool. So we'll have to work on some other ideas, but there's, we've been getting some great feedback, and so it'd be great to see what more we can expand on outside of the celebrations calendar. So we'll be, be focusing on that. Collaborate with libraries. This was something that I believe was brought by Sean. And so this is something that we actually are looking into. I have been reaching out to the King County Public Library System to see how we might be able to integrate into the Covington Library. They do have their story hours, and so gonna be talking with them as far as how we might be able to integrate our heritage celebrations into that.
Let me know how that goes. I'd love to be at the first one.
Okay, absolutely. Oh, absolutely. I will be shouting it from the rooftops to the council once we have that confirmed, because that'll be a, I think that'll be a great win for us to do that. And then begin brainstorming on how to create a public event to celebrate all cultures who live in Covington, similar to International Days in Kent. I think I'd mentioned before to the council that I had been in conversations with the folks who run the Kent International Days. And actually, it was kind of ironic, right before this year's celebration, the meeting before, our meeting before that, we had discussed about reaching back out to them. And the next day, what happens is I get an email from Dave Skipton, who is the President of the Board for the Kent International Days, saying, hey, we're ready to continue discussions about what we can do with Covington. So I am in discussions with him as far as what we can do to start getting them involved with the Equity Commission and get some discussions going. They would love, because they live here in Covington, so they would love to be able to do something here in Covington, similar to what is done down in Kent. And so that's kind of exciting to, to have somebody like that interested. So we're looking forward to that. Any questions? Yeah.
So I, I've been a big fan of the calendar, letting us know which culture months it is and everything. I will say I'm a little sad that you don't have Italian heritage.
That is in October.
I'm a little sad it's not on this paper.
No, no. It is in October, trust me. I.
I know, I know. But the other question is, when we're talking about cultures and other things on there, are we also looking at on, you know, we have many people in Covington who have a disability as so classified, that we can honor their, their attributes to at large, you know, April is Deaf Heritage History Month.
There are, there are lots of, lots of incidences where the disabled are recognized in the calendar throughout the year.
Okay.
And those are going to be included.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we, we get that included as well, because I know that that's a large segment of population and of the United States that we could, that have done wonderful things, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and this month is actually part of Disability Pride Month for celebration of the approval of, or the passing of the American Disabilities Act. So, which we did recognize on the calendar.
Okay, I just, I haven't, I haven't looked at the calendar this month. But I do, I do look at it monthly.
Wonderful. And, and actually, you know, we're, we, the, one of the things that we always put in there is that we want input. So we do encourage members of the public, if they're, if they're on our website, they're looking at the calendar, to also send us, you know, input, you know, we want to continue to build it, because it's, you know, it's limited to what we're able to find out. And so we would love input from others as far as, hey, this happens on this month, this happens on this month. So we can then do some more research and add that to the calendar. Absolutely. Awesome. Thank you.
Another. I think that's great, kind of following up again on the, the book reading. I know some of us did readings at the local schools. Kent School District asked us to read at some of the elementary schools. And I didn't think about it at the time, but it actually had a cultural kind of component to it, because a lot of the books that we were that were selected for us were related to the racial makeup of the classrooms that we were reading before. So I think that would be another great partnership and another opportunity for the city to kind of raise awareness about this commission, but also kind of talk and hear from those populations about some of the issues that they're dealing with, so.
Absolutely. Great idea. Got it noted. Excellent. All right, see. Number three, so Commission will continually work with the City to facilitate open dialogue about concerns related to DEI. We did invite our wonderful City Manager to our February, or March, 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 March meeting. And he helped guide us through some of the civics lessons for how we are to approach the council when we have something we want to present to you for approval. And, but we do, we do still recognize the fact that one of the things that is still, again, really difficult is, and, and I've picked up a lot of this when I'm reading comments online, is the number of people who still don't understand how our city government works. And so I, I'm in a lot of conversations, having to educate them about, you know, the difference between a mayor, city council ran like a city like Seattle versus a city, a city manager run, and they're really surprised. So it's kind of, we still feel that there is going to be some need out there to continue that dialogue with the public and do a Covington civics one-on-one type of, of thing to start to continue to educate the people in the community about how their city government works and how they can be involved and how they can impact change. It's amazing the number of times they all see people ma- making negative comments about something going on, whether it's roads or something. And it's a matter of, hey, here's how you can get your voice heard. Did you know that the City Council meets on these, these days every month? And here's commissions that you can get involved with, if you really, or, or that you can also attend and have your voice heard. So we want to continue in that direction as well. We did also invite Darren last month and had some wonderful conversations about his role as he continues to build that role. We understand that that is a work in progress. And it sounds like he's doing an amazing job. And so we also wanted to offer our assistance to him as well as he continues his path, so. And then increase internal city collaboration by facilitating a joint project with Youth Council, Human Services Council, and other city representatives. We have several ideas that could involve partnering up with some of the other commissions. And I know Chuck has mentioned on several occasions about coming up with something to work with the Youth Council, and so I'm gonna hand it off to him to talk about that.
We've been discussing the fact that there are a large population of disabled and elderly people that don't have any way to really find out anything, because they're not going to be computer literate. So I've been talking to the members of the Youth Council about going out in their communities and putting together a list, a call list, as they did in the old days. When somebody needs something, they can call on the list and, you know, and it's a voluntary thing. They go to your elderly neighbors, go to your disabled neighbors, find out if they'd like to be members of this call list so that they can reach out, not only to, to the city to help, but to one another. Because most people don't walk around the community. I mean, I'm one of the few people in Covington Park that actually walks my dogs twice a day. Nobody else does. So I know everybody in the neighborhood. I want the Youth Council to do the same thing, and they're, they're very, very involved in doing that, and they're, they're looking forward to it. It'll be a way for us to reach out. I, I, we also heard from Darren, there was some feedback at a meeting with the, one of the senior housing areas. That stuff that the Equity Commission could, should get involved in, if they knew that we existed. So reaching out to them on a person-to-person basis is the only way to get them involved and get them to have knowledge.
Any questions?
Are your meetings structured such that there's a public comment period versus just kind of a.
Just like yours.
Just like, okay.
Yep, just like yours. There's a one at the beginning and one at the end. Yeah.
It's, we follow the rules. Who made us take those classes, we follow the rules.
No, no, no.
We do, I still, I still make my own, but that's besides the point.
It's just a conversation.
That's above and beyond, because commissions don't have to have public comments, but Equity, Culture, Social Justice.
So David, I'm curious, do you get very many attendees at your meetings?
We have not had any to date.
Okay.
Well, when we're out in August for our nights out, our neighborhood nights out, we should be reminding folks about the various commissions and that they are, are they all open for public comment?
I know, they're not.
Okay, but yours is, so, yeah.
But they're all open for attendance.
Okay.
And just dovetail and Covington days, we need to promote our commission to Covington days as well.
That was one of the things that I, that's the, the planner and the event marketing person inside of me. Is that, to me, Covington Days is a beautiful opportunity for the city to be promoting how people can get involved with their city government and promoting the commissions. I even had mentioned that how great it would be if there was a, actually a shared tent by all the commissions to come together as, because we're all citizens, we're all citizen commissions to share out the information about all of the commissions, how we work together, how people can get involved with any of the commissions that they might be interested in, so.
Do you all have an entry in the parade?
We do not, but that is something that's in my head actually for next year, only because as I continue to clean out my parents' estate, my father, my late father built from scratch a replica of like a Model T, so it's the stick shift driving and, and that. And it's still sitting in the garage. I know that he used to actually drive it in the parade many years ago. So I've actually thought how fun that might be to have as a, you know, a commission's vehicle to where we can promote the commissions and have commissioners marching behind and, and that, so. The commission isn't allowed to have cooler cars in the parade than us. Again, it's just a replica. It was made from, you know, like a, a driving lawnmower engine, and so.
I don't know if this would be appropriate or if it's feasible, but what about an HOA meeting and just maybe giving a five-minute spiel on, I, I don't, maybe we rotate different commissions through the HOA meetings, so it's not, so everybody gets fair. No, but I know you all are short-staffed.
No, absolutely. And, and, you know, to be honest with you, I'm not, I'm not familiar with how many HOAs there are now in Covington. When I was, you know, a kid growing up here, HOAs were, you know, pretty much non-existent, other than, I think, Timberline. And that was about it. So it's, I know that things have changed, so I'm not really familiar with a lot of them.
This is related, but question actually then for Regan, will we have anything at the city booth that, like a QR code for different commissions that people might be interested in?
I don't know if there's a QR code, but there is information about how to get involved.
Okay, like paper, on paper. Okay, so we'll, yeah.
Well, and one of the things that we are working on, and Daphne and I were just talking about that right before the meeting. And it's in the process of being finalized. We've got, just like we did last year, we had a flyer. We're gonna have a flyer. This is actually, it's actually going to be smaller and be two per page. But this is where we're going to be promoting and wanting to, or last year, we were soliciting them to log on to our website to give input about what they would like to see. This, now, we have a couple of QR codes, but what we're wanting to do is find out, what do they celebrate? And so we've got, you know, various things. We've got, you know, winter solstice, Lunar New Year, Ramadan, Black History Month, just kind of, you know, as, as little kind of informational banners, but what do they celebrate? And what would they like to see? So this is gonna be something that we're gonna be promoting as well. Very easy to do, if you wanted to do QR codes. Daphne is quite proficient at it.
I can jump in. So Chris described this. This is what we have usually at the events, how to get involved. And on the back, it says how to get involved in the commissions or other things.
Okay, anything else? All right. Number four, the Commission will facilitate an open house, virtual and in-person as a listening session for a need analysis of a specific underrepresented community as aligned with the Commission's mission. So, well, this is something that we've always talked about as far as wanting to do some type of an open house. It is still on our, our planning as far as wanting to do. So it is something that will be down the road. And this could be something that we've even talked about, whether it's something that we do with other commissions in a joint session, or we do just specific for us. But it's something that, again, helps to engage the community and allows them an opportunity to hear about what's going on, as well as voice their concerns and give their input. And then implementing the ECSJ Commission redesigned approach to shift the relationship with the city to act as an advisory to the decision-making positions such as a city council, proposed recommendations to the city council that align with the mission and goals of the ECSJ. So one of the things that's in, I think that's in the packet or that Daphne passed around is something that Chuck brought to us and that, you know, let him speak to, but that is a recommendation for the city to join GARE Alliance. So I'm gonna hand it over to Chuck to talk a little about, about this one.
GARE is the Government Alliance for Race and Equity. It is a group of cities throughout the United States which band together to have a joint voice in what should be done in terms of diversity. They also offer classes that can be taken, given to members of the City Council and members of the city employees on various topics. I've given you a little bit of their background and their application costs. It's a thousand-dollar investment for the city to become members because you have less than a thousand employees. Federal Way is a member. There are many communities in the King County and in the South Sound that are members of that, and it would take the onus off of human resources, having to come up with programs, here's a resource for us. They are having on next Tuesday, uh, at 10 o'clock in the morning, there is an information. Uh, call that is available. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend since I will be in surgery. Next Tuesday morning on my foot. But I would encourage somebody from the, the council to go. Um, and see what they have to say and see if it's maybe something that you guys might want to get involved with. They're a great organization from the standpoint of what they have to offer.
They are good organization. They presented at our Association of Washington Cities. Conference.
Yeah.
A week ago, two weeks ago. Seems like it was months.
Well, you already knew about it. Come on.
Well, some of us did, but not everybody was there.
Any other questions, Sean? Okay, uh, so some of the things that we're, um, that we're looking at and that these would be things that we would be. Um, possibly bringing to the council. Best recommendations for the council to adopt or approve. Um, we have been talking about recommending the adoption of a land acknowledgement statement. We do that with the, in our commission. Um, that is something that, uh. We feel is important. Uh, the city has done a recognition in the, um, original. Was it the plan? Uh, there is in, there is in, it has been noted where the city does recognize. The indigenous tribes that, uh, that did live here. Uh, prior to European settlers. And so it is in, uh, it is in city recognition, but we think that, uh, that could be something that there could be something more done. Uh, whether it be through a land recognition statement, uh, at each council meeting. Or something that, um, we've also been talking about too. Uh, which is the next bullet point, recommend defining what a founder is in relation to Covington's history and naming a founder park. Um, this is where, um. Where I have discussed with the, with the commission about, we could even be partnering up with. Two other commissions. We could be partnering up with parks as well as arts commission. As far as putting something out there to where we could have something there to give recognition. To the, um, indigenous tribes that were once here prior to it being settled. And because they are, in, in essence, they are the original founders of this area. And so we thought, what a great way if we took. Um, just as a, you know, a section of the park, whether it be, you know, a garden or something to where there could be some artwork. Uh, that recognizes something that tribes could also participate in, in just kind of helping to give some recognition. So. Um, those are just some things that we're tossing about and that we do plan on, um, continuing to look at and bring. Uh, before the council for, uh, some approval, hopefully because we're, they're proud. There would be definitely some. Um, financials would be involved with that, so.
Yeah, this is great. Um, I appreciate that. Thinking outside the box related to the founders park and, and, um. It's kind of dovetails or aligns with what I've been thinking about that term. And I think it is. Rather than a static term, it is actually one that evolves and. Uh, when we get closer to actually developing that, the plan for this, I'd like, I'll, I'll be providing input saying. A founder is someone that has a significant impact on the future or the, the. Progress or the path of Covington. I, I, I want it to be, if I was. Emperor saying it's more than just people that were there that when we signed the documents saying Covington is a city, it's people that have a significant. Impact on Covington because Covington is never going to be done. It's always going to be. In the process of being founded. So. Just because you weren't here 25 years ago, you couldn't eventually be listed as a founder of Covington. Something I was thinking about there. And then one other thing, um, while I've got the floor is. There's an opportunity for us to look at who our sister cities are, um, and. See if there are opportunities for us to. Identify and partner with other cities that could help us. Better understand and fill out and. Think about cul- other cultures, equity, social justice, that sort of thing. I, I don't know the list of our. Current sister cities off the top of my head. Oh, so we have the talks now, yeah. Um, so there's opportunity for potential for other sister cities. I think it's something. Would be interesting to solicit from our communities. You know, there's a sizable Ukraine, uh, contingent in. Covington, the great, you know, we partner with a Ukrainian city or. Something on the African continent or something like that. I don't know, but there's a way to make people feel. More engaged in their city government, so.
Absolutely. I like that. Noted. Thank you. Um, one of the things that we've discussed, and again, this would be something we'd bring to the council because again, it does have a. Dollar expenditure to it. And that is, um, for the month of December. Recommend, um, honoring the, the three, especially the three various big, um, celebrations that happen. In the month of December, we have the holiday, um, event, we have the tree. Uh, but why not, um, share that with Christmas? With Hanukkah and with Kwanzaa. Um, one of the things that, um, I talked commission about is that when you look at all three of those, all three of those involve the lighting of candles. Um, with the, with the, with Christmas and the, with the Christian faith, you've got the, um. Advent, um, I'm just trying to remember that from when I was a kid. Uh, you've got the menorah with Hanukkah and then. We've got the, um, is it the Katara? If I remember right, uh, with Kwanzaa. Um, so we would, and something that I've been looking into, talking to. Um, I'm, had my sister's church, some people from her church. Who do a lot of construction as to how we might be able to even have something constructed. Um, have a, a large Katara, a menorah and a, an advent, uh, that can be there with lights. Uh, that could be lit, um, that could be there, uh, you know, with the tree. Uh, till we are giving recognition to, um, those three holidays. Uh, granted, they're not all, um. Holiday celebrations, they're all not religious in the, in the sense, um, by such as like Christmas. Uh, but they are still very important celebrations in the month of December for those, um, those three faiths. So. Uh, so that'd be something that we were, that we've been thinking about. Uh, and then the last one is, uh, review adjacent cities race and equity action plan. And then develop and recommend a draft specific to the Coving, to Covington's needs. So this was something that. Um, I had actually brought to Daphne when I had seen that the city of Kent. Had, um, had launched a race and equity action plan. And, uh, did a lot of reading into it, a lot of looking. It is very extensive because of course it's. Got to be built around your, your community. So theirs is a lot more extensive. Uh, and it's a long process. So it's not something that is done overnight or very quickly, but it is something that. Um, we want to look into and, and consider that, that would be something that would be beneficial for the city of Covington to do as well. So with that, that is, that's our goals. That's the update to what we, uh. Have been working on and what we are going to be looking, working on. Um, so any questions?
I just want to make a suggestion for the calendar for next July. Yeah, this is, sorry, but, uh, July 2nd, 1964, the Civil Rights Act of 1964 was passed. So it'll be the 60th anniversary. So we might want to add something to that on the calendar for next year.
Also next month, I'm not sure if anyone's aware, it is on August 24th. It is actually Ukrainian Independence Day. And I believe it's September 9th. That there will be a gigantic festival. In the city of Bellevue, actually at the Bellevue Park, the larger Bellevue Park in downtown. Um, in the past years, we've had a smaller park in Bellevue. But over 10,000 people came through, which is not a small amount of people. Um, food, music, all in accordance to the heritage. Um, usually I participate. I don't think I will be this year. Uh, can I just can't read enough to sing, but, um, everyone's welcome and. It could make it on the calendar, but the 24th is actually Independence Day, but the 9th is when it's going to be celebrated.
That's September 9th.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's a pretty good deal.
I lo- I love, I miss, I miss all those. I used to, big Greek festival that used to happen, the Italian festival that used to happen. I used to. Love all of those. Um, and I think to me, and I've, I've mentioned it before. The city council, even back when I first interviewed for the commission, that. To me, what brings communities together is the celebration around food, music, culture, the sharing of all that is just. And the arts, um, it's just, um, it's amazing to, to, um, share in. So that's where. You know, the, the, the discussions with the Skiptons has kind of been driving towards as well is let's bring that together for Covington. To where we can, you know, really start celebrating all the cultures. As I, there's not, to me, there's just nothing better than enjoying, um, especially the food.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna not be biased or anything, but Ukrainian food is amazing. And Kwas, which is the non-alcoholic beer, but it's just a different thing that you'll ever.
I did learn, I did learn how to make, uh, the Ukrainian potato salad.
Wow. Oh, Olivia.
Yeah, yeah, I've got, I got my recipe board.
I'm just a su- suggestion or maybe, I don't know if you all have thought about this. The tree is LED programmable, I do believe. Yeah. Because we were debating about this at work too, where we have LED strips in the big window and, you know. What holidays do we promote and what colors do we have turned on and. Felt like when we were talking about December, there was a, an interesting mix whilst, you know, a lot of times it's celebrated. Throughout the month of December where Kwanzaa could start and then. Hanukkah and then Christmas. Like, I'm wondering if that, it would be probably less expensive, at least for now until. Change the color of the light, maybe one week it's this, that, and when we do, and if we do the holidays and this, again, I'm. Maybe we do both, all three of them at once.
Speaking of somebody who was brought up in a Jewish household, putting lights on a tree doesn't make it. It's, it's, they don't do that.
No, no, just the colors, the colors.
They don't, they don't want to see it on the tree. They, they'd rather have a menorah. I don't care personally.
So we have blue and white lights on our house and my husband's like, people might think we're Jewish, not that we care, but I'm like, I don't care.
No, trust me, I, I, I grew up with, with, uh, one house had the, uh, blue and white. Uh, Hanukkah bush and the other had all the reds and silvers and golds for the, um. For the Catholic Italian side. So, yeah. Um, but yeah, and, and the thing with, the thing with it's, that's tricky too with December is, uh, when they each happen. I mean, we, uh, you know. Like this year, Hanukkah is the beginning of December. Next year, Hanukkah and Christmas actually overlap. Hanukkah starts on Christmas. Yeah, so they actually overlap and it was, so it will run, the days will run. That Christmas to New Year's. So they will actually overlap.
I know I've been to events where everyone gets a candle and it's really cute, like you touch.
Oh, that's actually, yeah, that's not, yeah.
When you were talking about that, I thought you were going to say they all celebrate light. And so I mean, that.
Which they, in the instance, they do with, 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 um, all involving the lighting of candles. So it is kind of involving light. Um, and that's kind of neat to where you can, um, actually add the tree lighting that can be part of. I mean. It doesn't have to be celebrated on the actual days, but it's just a matter of recognizing that. So that's actually kind of a neat idea.
With real fire, right?
Um, okay, so are we at, uh, 6:45? Um, so that's it for the work plan and that actually then ties into, um, the calendar. That's also in front of you that you'll see and as, um, you had, had indicated that there's, it's not all, all filled in. We filled in to, um, uh, upcoming months that we are going to be looking at. Um, and what we have going on. So, um, there is that. And then our strategic action plan. Uh, that has also been updated, uh, where we have, um, gone through and. Um, the work plan, of course, aligns with the goals, uh, that we have as far as the celebrate, serve. Um, promote and facilitate as part of our, um, as part of our, uh. Strategic action plans. So, uh, we've got that there for you to read as well. Uh, so with that. Um, that's all that I have to offer. So I'm going to open it up.
Does anybody have any questions?
Um, so you talked about this citizens one-on-one, uh, and in the past I've put together. A very preliminary citizens academy, uh, concept here. I never, I don't think. We just didn't have the capacity to do it, but I think it's a great idea. And so if the commission wants to move on something like that, get, get with me. I think we can put our heads together.
I like it.
Makes up the word.
Anybody else?
Well, I want to thank you, everybody on the Equity, Cultural and Social Justice Commission. Um, and all four of you that are here tonight for all the hard work, commitment you have. For, um, making sure that. It's not just meetings, but you're out and bringing awareness to everything and bringing awareness to us. Um, that's much appreciated. I know that I've learned a lot more since the commission was created and, uh. And I spent most of my conference in Spokane going to the GARE, listening to Mayor Ralph and quite a few of the other. Speakers on that issue and, uh. Did. Diversity, equity, inclusion and belong is what they brought up a lot during the conference. So. I appreciate it and I appreciate all the hard work that, that all of you were doing on the commission. So thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to give, um, unfortunately, a broad one was not able to join us tonight. She is, uh, under the weather. Uh, so I do want to thank her as well. Um, she is the only missing member of the commission tonight. So I do want to give her some kudos and recognition.
Well, thank you all very much. And, uh, with that, this joint study session is concluded. Thank you.
Thank you.